All right. Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, February 28th, and I'd like to call this meeting of the McComb Township Board of Trustees to order. Time is 6:30 PM. We will now say the pledge.
One nation, two states, of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, Incubusable with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Clerk Posey, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusimano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Deon.
Here. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Clerk Posey, are there any additions, additions, or corrections?
As of right now, we just have the proposed add-on request to approve revised board agenda rules and procedures and adapt Board of Trustees' meeting policy, which is item number 13.
Move to approve with the addition.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to split those into 13 and 14 so that we can discuss those separately?
Support. Certainly, Mr. Treasurer Gillette, can you amend your motion?
I will amend it as such. To split them into two separate items.
Designated 13A and 13B.
It would be designated 1314.
Mr. Cusimano, are you supporting Treasurer Gillette's amended motion?
Yes, support.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to approval of the bills. Is there a motion?
Oh, Mr. Chairman. For discussion, Chairman.
Certainly.
In review of the bill to be paid, I noted that one of the items on the additional run was DT Energy for Fund Number 266 in Department 301, which is for police. It's in the amount of 50813. Out of curiosity, I pulled my old copy of the contract which was executed on or about December 7, 2018, and I could not locate the responsibility for utilities being assigned to or payable by the township. I did see in paragraph 5 the following facilities. The township will provide suitable space for locker room facilities, desk space, and report writing computer and internet access and connections if aren't insufficient for patrol vehicles and location determined by the township. If someone, is there been a memorandum of understanding or is the position of the township that providing facilities includes utilities?
That is my understanding. I didn't ask for you of the specific contract, but when I read the contract after taking office, that was my understanding, and that has been the practice as I understand it. But beyond that, I can't speak to that. The contract is a number of years old.
I would ask that the contract be amended to reflect the actual in practice, the exact payment of the utility by the township so that there's no question about that responsibility. I believe the only other question I had was regarding Michigan Municipal Workers for the workers' comp insurance, and I would ask if any trustee has expertise in the insurance. First, does that watch a competitive bidding? Is my first question.
Workers' comp insurance? I believe it goes through our agent, and then the agent will then solicit feds. I don't know when the last time the competitive bidding process took place from our agent, though.
So, I'd ask that they be separated because I believe it is under the purchasing policy. It should be subject to provisions of the purchasing policy for the competitive bidding.
I don't think it's any different than any of our other insurance policies for liability, anything else that we pay on a regular basis, including our health insurance, which we have had the same agent for, I understand, well over eight years.
Is there an exception in the purchasing policy to insurance? Either workers' comp or general liability, or is it just a matter of practice? That we don't apply the purchasing policy requirement for competitive bidding?
That's a good question that I do need the purchasing specialist to answer for me, which I can answer that question. I don't think she's on tonight.
All right, subject to, well, this policy for the workers' comp is for a full year period. I'd ask that that be put over for the next meeting if I ask that that be pulled from the agenda until I can give an answer to that question.
I don't think we can not pay that bill, otherwise we're going to be delinquent in our payment or insurance. We'll be subject to penalties or fines, or it goes too delinquent, of course.
I ask that.
I don't know when the exact due date is. Is it on the bill or am I ahead in front of me?
Can I ask a question? We're not talking about entering into a new contract here, are we? We're talking about paying a bill on a policy that's already been contracted at some point.
I believe the policy is set to renew, and that this is the renewal period for a full year. My question is, why is that not subject to the purchasing policy requirement? I know at the college, there is a consortium of community colleges that give that authority to that entity, and I think it's the Michigan Community College Association Insurance. It's got a title, but I don't believe there's an exception in the purchasing policy for insurance policies. She's not up for competitive bidding, and it's quite an outweigh. It's $176,000.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Cusimano, I will take the information and your concerns to the purchasing specialist, and we'll review it. If it was past practice, we'll ensure that it goes up for competitive bidding before it's renewed.
Thank you. I'd ask that that be separated from so I can pass a note board on that one line item.
Okay. It was, which line item could you just repeat it?
It is the payment for Michigan Municipal Workers' Workers' Comp Insurance from 7/1/21 to 7, I'm sorry, 6/30 to 2022. The amount is $176,000. I don't have.
So, just, are you, was your motion going to be that you want that item separated for approval? Or do you want to make a motion to hold that item over, because you said both things?
Separated for approval.
Separated for approval, okay. Okay, so we currently have a motion from Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido. Do you have an amendment to that motion?
Charlie?
So, yes.
To separate.
So, you wanted amended the way Jim stated. Is that going to work in the way we're paying the bills? Does that going to affect?
She's just going to vote separately on it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll amend that.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Lucido, your support stand?
Sure.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the amended motion? So, we're going to be voting on all of the bill run except for the workers' comp insurance. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries. And the second motion? So, there's our motion to pay the workers' comp insurance bill.
So moved.
Support. I have a question again. Are we approving to pay a bill or approving a contract?
Just based on what I can see from this, if I can just interject.
Sure.
This appears to me to be a renewal, and the renewal starts July 1st. I don't have any backup to that other than looking at the dates. And I would think that we would have at least until July 1st to make this payment in order to maintain the coverage. I don't think we're jeopardizing any coverage to maybe separate this out and look at it a little closer from now till then. Having not looked at the policy, I can't guarantee that, but in the insurance world, you would at least have up until your renewal.
Mr. Chairman, if that's the case, then I'll amend my motion to postpone the payment to Michigan Municipal Comp Insurance until the next board meeting.
Just a second.
I got a question on that. How do we know for sure?
We need a second on the motion before we can discuss it.
Oh. Or to agree with the amendment, which Charlie made the second, so he'd have to agree to clerk Posey's amendment. Then we could discuss it the year, Charlie years after.
Okay. Now, Charlie, we can discuss.
Okay. My question is, are we jeopardizing our work comp?
I don't believe so. I think Trustee Lucido's observation is accurate. I didn't have the renewal dates in front of me, but if it's July 1st, then...
I mean, obviously, I think the motion should be subject to checking that out ASAP.
Yeah.
I don't think two weeks is going to matter.
I don't either, based on that.
That's fine. We can get that information, and we can satisfy Trustee Cusimano's concerns.
So, we're confident we are not jeopardizing our work comp policy?
Based on the notes here, it's showing premium from 7/1/21 to 6/30 of 22, which would indicate to me a renewal.
Sure.
And so, we're still in our coverage period now, we're only in April, maybe June, July.
Okay.
We should be fine, but again, I don't have all that in front of me. I would be confident saying this is a renewal.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, it would satisfy me to make sure that this issue that I brought up with very insurance, the competitive issue, is not go downstream and over the falls and be forgotten about as we move on to new businesses.
No, let's hold it over for two weeks. Let's get a great answer.
Okay.
And we'll come back with that. I'll be helping quote it for you.
Just to address Trustee Cusimano's concern, what we're doing now, it was paying every other bill except that. So, if we don't bring it back up, we don't have insurance within a few months. So, it has to be wrapped up to be addressed.
Well, I just don't want it limited in scope to just workers' comp issue. I want it to provide general liability and any other insurance policies that we have. But thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
But they may not renew at the same time, and you don't necessarily want to be voting midterm all the time. So.
That's fine. I'm just talking as a general principle. Whether or not the purchasing policy, there's no exception for insurance, and that therefore it should be adhered to unless we carve out an exception and hold on that as a policy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusimano. So, we still have a motion on the floor to hold over this one bill payment until next meeting. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, I believe. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Moving on to approval of the previous meeting minutes from April 14th, 2021.
So moved. Move to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? Your motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve last meeting's minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Moving on to consent agenda items. These are items that come before the board from time to time, and they are fairly routine in nature. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve this consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent items? Your motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now, we are on public comment. For those of you who have joined us here today, we did change up the boardroom just slightly to accommodate our technology because we are including the Zoom feature. If you have something to say, you're going to approach the table that's directly in front of the board here. This is the second one. And you have your comments. So, if anyone wishes to speak at this time, you will have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Western. Who's bear with me? I'm out of practice, and I've never done some of this with a mask on. McComb Township resident, I'd love to speak to two agenda items this evening. The first is now, I guess, item 14, the Board of Trustees' meeting policy, which I did find on the website midday on Monday. And when reading it, I certainly recognized the usefulness and necessity for it. Conducted meetings has been frictional at times in the past, at times in the past, and it's useful to memorialize how it will be conducted and the behavior of all parties. Pardon me, please. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I can, I'm struggling to hear you. I'll try to up the volume.
Okay. Hard with the mask.
Yeah, and enunciate a little more. It's an important policy, and it's fairly long, detailed, and complicated. And particularly since it was an add-on that became public some time on Monday, what I'm hoping is tonight to hear discussion and to hear rationale around the changes and to hear you folks discuss what will work and will not, but not to take action on it tonight. I think there's a lot to unpack here. If there was discussion of it tonight and further dissemination of it to the public that gives other people time to react and ask more questions. I have several questions, but I suspect during your discussion, most of those will be answered. And if not, then I could address it at another time. For example, I could not determine from here if this means the board has permanently abandoned the previous practice of having two segments for public comment during the meeting. First being specific to agenda items, and then toward the end of the meeting, an opportunity to talk on other township business, not necessarily the agenda. And this document did not tell me that. There are some other questions, but I will set those aside for hearing your discussion because I do want to speak to another agenda item. I'm cognizant of the timeframe, which also makes me wonder what's magic about three minutes? Three minutes is tough when you want to talk about more than one agenda item. Now, had there been a second session tonight for public comment, I might have saved these comments for that. Instead, I will write an agenda item about Waldenburg Park improvements and say, this is very useful. Certainly, we need these.
As difficult as this is with your previous comment, I do have to warn you that your three minutes is up.
May I ask, may I beg your indulgence for two more minutes to talk about parks?
I'm sorry. The meeting procedures are, even part of adopting this, are three minutes. If I allow them to you, it'd have to be everybody, and it'd be a change of policy.
Okay. I will say very quickly then, an article in the McComb Daily 15 months ago described major changes at at least three different parks. It had the big graphic behind you on the screen, and it doesn't seem like anything's happening. So, if it's not possible to discuss the other parks, such as the Lywoodney Park tonight, maybe during supervisor comments, you could give us a brief update on what's happening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Superintendent. Is there anyone else in the gallery tonight that wishes to comment? All right, Mr. Ivanowski, do we have any commenters on Zoom tonight?
Currently, we have 10 attendees, but I do not see anybody raising their hand. So, just as a reminder, if you're on a computer, please click the raise hand button to talk. Or if you're using a phone, star nine to be able to speak. I do not see any interest at this moment, Mr. Supervisor.
Good. We will close the floor to public comment, and we will move on to new business. Item number eight is a request for approval of construction pay estimate number three, Country Club Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project 0249-0169 to Paybar Enterprises, Inc., the amount of $50,769.45. Your motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wanglin, are you available?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. Tonight, Water and Sewers in front of you asking for permission to approve this pay cert number three. As already stated, this will be for $50,769.45. It'll be made payable to Paybar Enterprises. As everybody's aware, this project took place late last summer, early fall, and we are recommending approval of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Mr. Wanglin, does this mean that all of the restoration work has been completed?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. We have a motion to pay construction pay estimate number three to Paybar Enterprises of the amount of $50,769.45. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Item number nine. We have a request for approval to award Lakeview Contract in 18 to Lower the Water Main in conjunction with McComb County Department of Roads Culvert Replacement Work on 24 Mile Road and Romeo Plank in McComb Ditch, Section 17, the amount of $18,450. Your motion.
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Wanglin.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Deon and board members. Tonight, Water and Sewers in front of you asking for approval to award this project to Lakeview Escavating, Lakeview Contract, in the amount of $18,450.0. A little background on this. As you may or may not be aware, the culvert just on Romeo Plank, just south of 24 Mile Road, has failed. It's due to be replaced by Lakeview, which has been hired by the Department of Roads. Through some further research, it's been determined that the angle of the new culvert will be changed a little bit, as well as the elevation. Thus, the need for lowering the water main, lowering the water main here. And we just thought it would be good business sense to work with Lakeview since they are the Department of Roads contractor. And Lakeview is a contractor that water and sewer and engineering are familiar with. And they've done work for us in the past. And it'd be, in our opinion, good business sense to award this to them in the amount of listed in your packet tonight. Also in your packet, you'll see a letter of recommendation or a letter of approval from the purchasing specialist, as well as an estimate from AEW. And as you can see, the estimate from AEW is a little bit higher than what Lakeview is presented. And so, we are recommending approval of this work tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Wanglin. Any discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, to award the contract for the culvert replacement work on 24 Mile Road to Lakeview Contracting in the amount of $18,450. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, board.
Mr. Wanglin. Moving on to item 10 is a preliminary plan approval request for Villa Tuscana located on the east side of Romeo Plank, 1700 feet south of 24 Mile Road. Parcel number 08-33-151-002-003 and -004. Your motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Box.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor and board. As you mentioned, we're here in front of you tonight asking for an approval of the preliminary plan for Villa Tuscana. This is in Section 33, east of Romeo Plank, south of 21 Mile. They have already gone through a couple of lot combinations, as well as rezoning on the property. And they've gotten some variances to accommodate a couple of the lots that they're proposing in the back of the development. And now, they are here for the site plan approval, preliminary site plan. It is 21 units, single-family units. All internal departments are in support of this, and the planning commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions for Mr. Box or any discussion from the board? Okay, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the preliminary site plan for Villa Tuscana located on parcel 08-33-151-002, 003, and 004. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is a request to update the fee schedule to include fees for zoning certificate to cultivate medical marijuana and extension of time request. Mr. Box.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board. I came before you in October to update our fee schedule. We do update that from time to time for a number of different applications, such as site plans or special land use. In this instance, we're actually only updating two items, actually adding two items. None of the other fees have changed. We are adding the zoning certificate to cultivate medical marijuana, which the board approved at its last meeting, that they approved the language for that ordinance. But part of that language indicates that the board must approve the fee. So, that's the fee that's attached to the fee schedule in your packet, as well as an extension of time. That is another application that we've been wanting to add to our fee schedule.
All right, thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any questions, Mr. Box, or any discussion? All right, hearing none?
No.
No, we didn't make a motion then, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question or comment. Is board policy periodically reviewed the fee schedules? For example, site plan submissions fee, does that not change? And if not, how long has it been since it's been increased?
Trustee Cusimano, can I ask you to hold your question for a second? I need to get a motion on the floor, which I skipped.
I apologize.
So moved.
It was my fault. I moved too quick.
So moved.
Any support?
Support.
All right, we have a support. We have a motion type. Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido. So, now we can have discussion on that.
Yeah, my question is, is that this is, it's been mentioned that the fee schedule has not been increased in an environment where the township is looking for revenue, or to offset certain improvements in maintenance, for example, water and sewage.
Trustee Cusimano, I don't mean to interrupt, but Mr. Box just said that he was before us just last October with a new fee schedule, and he's bringing a new one again. So, it was recently reviewed and updated.
Reviewed and updated.
Correct. Is that correct, Mr. Box?
Yes, the one that was in front of the board in October had actually not been updated quite some time. We did a number of, a bit of research on neighboring communities, what their fees are, as well as we looked at how much time and energy is put in with our internal staff, as well as some of our consultants, to determine what the appropriate fees were. That was back in October. This fee schedule, none of those have changed. We've just added two things onto the fee schedule.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but I just wanted to make sure we were operating on the same information.
What meetings did that take place?
Do you know which meeting in October, Mr. Box?
Off the head, I do not.
I can look at both meetings in actual, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. That answers my question.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, we have a motion from Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to update the fee schedule in the planning department. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 12. Is a request to award the contract for Waldenburg Park Improvements. Your motion.
So moved.
Second.
Van Tiflin? Oh, I'm sorry, this is going under Mr. DeCaro.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to award the contract for park improvements at Waldenberg Park. This includes replacing the bridge boardwalk and improving drainage along the middle branch of the Clinton River. Item was placed on mitten. We received two bids ranging from three hundred and forty four thousand, six hundred and fifty five dollars. To four hundred and eighty four thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents. At this time, we're recommending LJ Construction to be awarded the contract for three hundred and forty four thousand, six hundred and fifty five dollars. I've included the bid tabulations. And the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing specialist. Uh, this item has been reviewed by the engineering department. Pro- the project would begin on June the first, two thousand twenty one and plans to be completed by August fifteenth, two thousand twenty one. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Supervisor. If if I could just ask, uh, Mr. DeCaro. The what will be the substantial change in the nature of the bridge? Currently, it's been a wood bridge. Is it going to be replaced? With a equivalent bridge or something different?
So so basically, uh, we were given three choices. The first choice would have been a duplicate bridge of what we had. Uh, that bridge was put in in two thousand and one. We probably started having problems about five years ago and have just extended it. Uh, the bridge that we chose uh, is similar to the bridge on twenty one mile road. And uh, some of the features on that, it does have hand railings, which this one did not. It it's elevated out of the flood plain, so that will help. That was part of uh, uh, the main problem, obviously, with the old bridge. And it's sturdier than the the current bridge that we had. Uh, the third bridge that we were offered had steel beams and it was really, really expensive, to be honest with you. So this by far, we felt was the best uh, bang for our buck, I guess.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, Mr. DeCaro, the um, improvement on the drainage along the middle branch of the Clinton River. Will that help with the flooding in that in the parking lot area?
Yeah, that that'll help a lot with the flooding. Uh, we obviously, we we move the placcape because of the flooding. And and obviously, in April and May, we always have problems. So that should help us a lot with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
He froze, I think.
Just let's just him. One follow up question, uh, if I could. Uh, Mr. DeCaro, do you know what the life expectancy of the new bridge might be?
Hopefully longer than the twenty years that we got out of the last one, but I I really don't know off the top of my head. Uh, Mr. Van Tifflin might be able to help with that. Uh, a- again, the last one was supposed to give us about twenty years and. It it took a little bit more, but we did, we did get that out of it. Jim, would you say, would you agree with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say it's more than twenty years. We we should be able to get out of it easy. This is, it's it's the same quality of boardwalk that we have uh, for the two crossings in front of Waldenberg Park on twenty one mile. And they're they're substantially built, so.
Thank you.
One quick question. So, is there any, is there going to be any composite material on here? Is that, or is it just going to be just still always wood, all wood?
Okay, that again, Jim, I'd like to defer to you. You would know better on that.
It's all humanized lumber, high quality humanized lumber that don't be using.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by clerk Posey. Uh, to award the contract for the Waldenberg Park improvements. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Alright, moving on to the first of our proposed add-ons. Our add-ons is item thirteen. Request to approve revised board agenda rules and procedures. Is there a motion? So moved. Support. Is there a discussion or any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to point out, uh, especially for our department heads, if they haven't had uh, an opportunity to read through the packet that. This uh, due to the software that the clerk's department purchased uh, last year. Uh, this allows us to um, put together the agenda packets and information uh, quicker. So we have the ability to extend um, the deadline for agenda items to our department heads. So uh, the board adopted this uh, procedure back in two thousand and seventeen, I believe. And um, I just wanted to make sure we updated it to reflect the ability to change those dates. And also with input from the new supervisor on um, the process for board members to submit things for the agenda.
Mr. Clerk, I rely to that. Um, as far as the board members are concerned. Uh, we actually expanded access to the agenda by, so not only uh, can you submit an item through me? And with my discretion, add it to the agenda with your input. But with uh, written support of any other two board members. You don't need my discretion. It will automatically be advanced to the agenda. And of course, we all know that any four board members can amend the agenda uh, before the board meeting. So you have three means of access to the agenda if you have items you wish to look forward.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Sure.
Why three trustees versus two? A proposal plus two rather than a proposal trustee plus one? What what is? I, it's my position that trustees are elected by the electors of the township. And the proposals would in fact bring forth issues. That should openly discuss, which not occur or would occur less frequently. With the higher standard of the proposal plus two in writing. So I want to know if there's any rational basis for that, other than the possible interest.
I would uh, I would counter that it's not a higher standard. It's actually uh, more open. Because prior to this, all the agenda items were at my discretion. Um, I don't want to be the keeper of the agenda. That's why I, that's my suggestion to open it up further. So that if there is an item that is important enough. Uh, to get the board's attention, that at least two other board members would have to agree with you. I think it uh, eliminates uh, things that really don't have a chance for support. So that we're focusing on the business of the township uh, in an effective and efficient way. I think any board member can use their commentary to bring up issues, just can mention them or discuss them. I think it gives us actually a pretty wide open opportunity to put business before the township. So I I just don't agree with your assessment, although I understand two would be less. But uh, I think you need at least the minority of the board at three to merit. Advancing something automatically to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully disagree. I ask, I make a motion to amend it to the of the number two. The proposing trustee plus one supporting trustee in writing. Motion to amend the proposal.
Chair, I have a question. It's appropriate, Chair.
As far as at this point, it would be natural to be probably tirade here, but if there's no support, then my motion would die.
Is there a?
I'll support that.
Right, so. Is it now that we can ask a question, Chair? In effect, don't, if I wanted to bring something on the agenda. And had uh, had not had uh, approached any other member of the board. There's, there's nothing that would stop me now from at the beginning of the meeting, making a motion to amend the agenda.
Correct.
To add an additional item.
Correct.
That motion would require the addition of one supporter for that motion.
Correct.
And then there'd be discussion on that agenda item. So I I do understand, um, you know, the the debate we're having on this, but ultimately, I'm not sure it changes much from the. You know, if if I want something on the agenda. And you don't approve it, for some reason, I can come here and make a motion. As long as I get one person to second it, I can argue.
Correct.
Uh, that why it has merit and why it should be on the agenda.
I guess when I, when I said that uh, you can change the agenda with the support of any four, that. I guess presumed that yes, it would have at least some of support for your motion.
Ultimately, it would require two.
And my point to having three at the earlier stage is to advance automatically, which means ask me. Uh, would require at least the written support of two. So I think, I think as it's written, it does accomplish both things.
Mr. Chairman, a brief response. It would under Treasurer Grulet's paradigm, it would take two to propose the amendment of the agenda. And four to actually. Approve the amendment. So, but I would think that my proposal of the two. Would. Lessen the possibility of people playing jack in the box politics with. Um, agenda items and proposals on the fly. And get the information out in the packet pursuant to the procedures that you outlined elsewhere in the process. And uh, that way have an open and fully um, educated discussion on it rather than. Just an argument that's taking place on the fly at the meeting. So I would. With no other discussion, I ask for a vote on my reduction to the base level of two trustees proposing an agenda item. To place it on the agenda. And uh, have a vote.
I I want to look one more comment before I call for the vote.
Okay.
Um. One of the issues I discussed uh, with council prior to making this change uh, that I suggested. Was just exactly what you said, this idea of jack in the box politics, people. Suddenly launching agenda items to grandstand up here instead of doing the business that we were elected to do and was making. Point. And what I'm afraid could happen if two people. I I don't see that with this board, because I think we've all been very uh, very good working, very good working relationships. But with previous boards, I could see it happening where two people uh, try to hijack an agenda. And put forth a lot of politically charged or personal items. And I think all that would happen is the majority at the beginning of every meeting would change the agenda. And get rid of all of it. And there would still be no discussion. So I I, that's that's what I'm afraid of by lowering the threshold to two, is that it would open the door for future lords. Uh, play just those fancy games.
Mr. Chair, uh, just for clarification. Is there a provision for someone to remove something from the agenda other than than in the agenda, or this is just for adding things to the agenda?
Just for adding and deletions, obviously, are part of what our, what we discussed at the beginning of the document, an agenda for that.
So since we are on discussion. I can see both points. I can see a trustee Kuzmano's concern that in a. An item that might be of some importance to a member, uh, you know, might be asking too much of a threshold if you get that on the board. But it seems I've seen other, in other boards where some, or, and again, I don't anticipate this from anybody on this board. Where people bring up highly politicized, uh. You know, Frank, I stand on the board commissioners, where some members might bring up a grandstanding resolution that. May not even necessarily be the business of the um, of the board of commissioners, for example. So they have an opportunity to make a political speech about it and get on the agenda. So I can see where it could be abused. Either way, so I, I guess I'm a little bit torn. I appreciate having a discussion on this, because I'll. I certainly don't want to shut out any member of the board who wants to bring an issue before the board. And I want to make it accessible. To every member of this board being an issue. And I don't see with this board, but it could be in a future board, you know, where somebody decides, you know, two people go, hey, today we're going to talk uh. Foreign policy in Iran, because I want to make a speech about it, or, you know, whatever it might be. I've I've seen that happen in some other, other entities. So that's a, I guess we're a little bit torn on it.
And um, Mr. Chairman, uh, I think maybe there is a little um. Uh, concern about the word discrepancy, excuse me, not discrepancy, um, discretion. So it it isn't that you're choosing what that's going to go on the agenda. And you're going to put your informator on something that goes on the agenda. Is is that correct? I'm not hearing that, am I?
That is part of the agenda process now. So the department head, I'll bring the items. It's my responsibility to approve or disapprove as as. You know, I see the business of the township that needs to get done. So all agenda items that are brought forth by department heads have to go through my office. That's what the practice was is when I arrived, and that's what the practice has been since. That practice also stands with any one board member who has an issue, who wants to forward me something, just like trustee Kuzmano did with some of the things we have tonight. Uh. You know, I agreed that it was something we needed to look at, and we looked at it, and that's how it ended up on tonight's agenda. So, and so, but what I added was, I I thought I was adding was actually. More access to the trustees and the other board members, not less.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to kill the topic, but um, uh, trustee Nevers. Trustee Nevers, I just wanted to add on to what you were saying. Um, in my previous uh, term. Um, there was, it was easily um, to accuse somebody of trying to manipulate the agenda. And to uh, remove without permission and things of that nature. Um. No disrespect, but unfortunately, the previous supervisor didn't exercise, didn't follow through with process. So it was kind of haywire. And um, unprofessional at times. So um, this, a lot of this is to help control professionalism at the board meeting and to not accuse an individual of trying to manipulate the agenda.
Thank you for that clarification as well.
Chairman, I have a question, but I think I'm going to let our attorney talk first, because it looks like he has his hand raised. On that. Did you have your hand raised?
Mr. Thompson, did you want to weigh in on this?
But I do have a copy after that.
Sure.
Mr. Lucino, go first.
Okay. I I like to look at things from a standard of not theoretical, but practical. If I say that I want to put something on the agenda and I go to the supervisor to have it on the agenda. And at his discretion, he tells me no. That's one that I can take off the list of trustees or board members that I have to go to. So now that I only need one other one to override the supervisor. I I I kind of like the idea of needing two more to basically show the supervisor, hey, your discretion, you know. I carry more weight now than when I came to you with just this item. So I I am in favor of having two additional on top of it to not just be stacking the agenda with, I don't want to say. Um, useless items, but things that obviously our supervisor, who's here on a day to day basis, did not seem. To be relevant enough to put on the agenda. So I'm just thinking, if you go to the supervisor. At his discretion, he doesn't put it on the agenda, you've eliminated one person that you could have sign it. I think if you get two more, now you're going with three, it carries a lot more weight to put it on the agenda. Rather than just finding one other person to sign off on it and say, go ahead. There had to be a reason the supervisor didn't want to let me generate use of discretion to not put it on. That's my question.
Mr. Thompson, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chairman. So uh, when we talked about this uh, policy, we definitely were looking at some different issues. But at the end of the day, this didn't come out of the blue. This whole thing about. Trying to govern what's going on with the agenda. The requirement of two, 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 you know, other, yeah, two additional uh, board trustees. Came from a number of charters that have been in place for years for a number of communities. So it wasn't just pulling it out of the blue. We 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 researched it and um, we thought that that was the compromise. At the end of the day, quite frankly, right now, with the policy that's in place. Mr. Viviano has the ability to govern everything. You guys have no control at all. He's actually opening it up to the trustees, so there's an ability to bring something on the agenda that otherwise he may. Agree or disagree with, it doesn't matter. To put it on the agenda and put. it doesn't matter, to put it on the agenda and put it before the people, et cetera. The three-person is pretty common, and that's why we came up with that.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, one last comment. I agree with everything that's been said. These are rational arguments on both sides of this issue. I just prefer to have, for purposes of openness, having a matter on the agenda where the public can judge the efficiency and the effectiveness of their elected representatives by their vote. Under the scenario, there's a certain class or number of agenda items which will never make it because of discouragement of the trustee not to bring it because he can't get sufficient support, and therefore there will be no vote. So if that trustee is in the minority, the public will never know that he was trying to, or she was trying to bring the issue forth or vote. That's the reason, among other reasons, it's already been discussed. But I appreciate the candor and the professionalism that all board members have shown in discussing this topic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano.
And Mr. Viviano, I would say that, and that's why we have comments from the trustees at the end, so that they can tell us what they feel is appropriate and just can't get it done.
So if we have more discussion on Mr. Cusmano's motion to amend the proposed procedures, we need to vote on that first, correct?
Yes.
So just so I, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, so I know what we're voting on.
Mr. Cusmano made a motion to change the proposed rules from three to two and supported by trustee Nevers.
Okay.
So if we vote in the affirmative, then we will change that number from three to two, and then we will vote on adopting that rule and procedures. Those rules and procedures.
So the proposal that you set forth tonight is...
The proposal that I put forth is to have three trustees agree on any given item in order to advance an item automatically to the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Cusmano's amendment is to reduce that number to two.
Which is what we're going to vote on now.
Right now.
Yeah.
Clear what we're voting on? So if there's no more discussion, there is a motion by trustee Cusmano, supported by trustee Nevers, to change the proposed rules and procedures governing the agenda, to include language that says that two trustee... I'm trying to read that language.
Written. The board member can present the support of two additions.
Let's say the board member...
AJ's going.
So the board member can present the written support of one additional board member along with their proposal. And the item will then advance to the agenda. All those in favor?
Vote, call, vote.
The opposing will call the roll.
Yes. Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Trustee Lucido.
No.
Trustee Oliver.
No.
Trustee Gillette.
No.
Kirk Posey, no. Supervisor Viviano.
No. That motion fails. So now, do we have a motion to adopt the rules and procedures?
Gillette, supported by Lucido.
Okay. So is there any further discussion on the rules and procedures as presented in the board document? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Please, all of us, both of us, thanks for wearing masks.
For the record, Roger, in case you couldn't hear, it was trustee Cusmano, nay, and trustee Nevers, nay. All other members were in favor.
That motion carries. All right, moving on to item 14, which is to adopt the board of trustees' meeting policy. Is there a motion?
So move.
We would like to start discussion on this.
Chairman, if I recall correctly, this item was brought to our attention by trustee Cusmano.
Correct.
Who made some recommendations with regard to the meeting policy. Those recommendations were then forwarded to our legal counsel.
Correct.
Who then suggested some edits and revisions. And then that document effort been edited and revised by our legal counsel is the one before us today.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Tre- Treasurer Gillette, that was also forwarded to the board to review prior to that as well for any comments or discussion.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chairman, I did put forth what I consider to be a amalgamation of previous board policy and to go to Ms. Western's point, who's taking great advantage of public comment, in my opinion, has been an asset as a voice of the community to several issues before the board in past years and hopefully should continue to do so in the future if she's still here. I also, in that proposal, I split the two public comments, I believe, into the two separate portions of the meeting, one for agenda items, one for non-agenda items, to pick up what Mr. Thompson had mentioned. That's done more often than not in many communities. And if that's the standard, then I think that we should stick with that so that the board can be focused on certain agenda items and the population and the residents can focus on those agenda items and get enough time to fully flesh out and articulate what their opinions are. I also included a report from the Sheriff's Department on, you know, a report of criminal activity and general state of criminal activity in the township. Those were edited out, and I can understand its rational line. And I'm not want to extend the meeting out on certain issues. But I don't want there to be an implication that this is what I had proposed, was to keep the single public comment. I, my proposal was to keep it split, as I recall. Correctly, if I'm wrong, I fielded quite a lot of many words and sentences and papers in my life, so if I'm incorrect, feel free to call to my attention. My main thrust of it was to make all board members aware vis a vis the ordinance rather than a policy resolution, because even I, as an attorney, don't know where to go to look to find these resolutions. Maybe there's some big, grand book somewhere in the township or binder. But if it's in the Muti Code, then it's accessible to the residents and the public at large. So I'm in support of the proposal, except that I would like to see a splitting of the two public comments for agenda items and non-agenda items. Otherwise, I have no issue and I'm in favor of passing of the resolution as prescribed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
And maybe, oh, Mr. Thompson is raising his hand again. He wants to go now.
Oh, go ahead, Peter.
Okay. Actually, my question was going to be to you on this idea of having it split. I actually had seen other board meetings in other municipalities where they speak on the agenda items as the agenda items hit the floor. So it used to be, are there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience at that time? And then they're limited to maybe a minute, not three minutes on that because they don't have to cram everything all into one. I would be in favor of something more than that rather than somebody have to give their opinion on something before hearing the discussion of the board members. So I don't know if that's going to add time on to the agenda. I don't know if that's something that can even be done, but I actually am more in favor of that, where non-agenda items would be at the end, but agenda items would be as they're presented to the board with maybe a minute time limit for each one, rather than a three-minute trying to address everything all at one time.
Do you have a comment on that, if I may? Supervisor?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So every community is different on how they handle that. I will say, my experience is typically, I'm not going to say typically. My experience is there's a portion for agenda items only and just general township business at the end. That kind of covers everything, so to say. I am not a big fan of the individual agenda items because it becomes very, 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 it's tough. But I will say, my experience is give them three minutes at the beginning as far as discussion of agenda items and city or township business. That has worked very well. There's authority for it from a legal standpoint. And that's kind of why this policy has been developed this way.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
This is kind of, and thank you, Mr. Thompson. I feel, going to say what you do, we still have to remember that the agenda goes out, and we have three full-time people here that could answer a lot of these questions from the residents. To possibly put, speaking on every agenda, that could really, really drag things down, I think. I think we put the agenda out early enough. I think there's times where residents call me right after the agenda, and I'll briefly tell them what it's all about, and it's done. And they never come to the meeting, or they never ask no more. And I'm assuming with all of the board, that's a very common practice, especially if some of the residents that might know you personally, they feel more comfortable to call you. But I got concerns on letting the residents speak on every agenda item because a lot of their answers could be clarified before the meeting.
Right.
So that's just a comment.
Thank you, trustee Oliver.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to remind everybody, and maybe we're not aware, when COVID hit us all back in March of last year, the recommendation from MTA on the agenda and standardized process, because we had to change a lot of things to adjust and adapt to a pandemic, was to limit the public comments to one per agenda due to the Zooming and the difficulty that people have, and it's hard to hear, and it wasn't as effective. So that's when we originally changed from the two sets of public comments to the one. It doesn't appear that we're probably going to be out of Zooming anywhere in the near future, but I don't have any, I don't have any difference of opinion if we have one or two. It was just a matter of which MTA suggested in the times that we are today.
Nay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to insert between approval of agenda items with any changes and approval of current bill on any deletions or modifications, the section of the public open meeting to read public comment agenda items. That's my motion.
Well, I'll second it for point of discussion, but I think the motion may be incomplete to what you were perhaps hoping to accomplish, which would have to insert a agenda item or a public comment, no, non-agenda items, also then at the end of the meeting, since that's the intent.
That's correct. Although, public comments, agenda items and non-agenda items would be rejected to read public comments, non-agenda items. Three-minute limit on both.
So just to make sure I'm clear what the motion being made is. Trustee, your motion is to amend the proposed proposal so that the public has an opportunity to speak on agenda items toward the beginning of the meeting, and then speak on non-agenda items toward the conclusion meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And where, in relation to the current proposal, or is it each one?
If I may?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. So the public comments on agenda items would go under the approval of previous meeting minutes, which will then give the public to even comment on our consent items before they're approved. And then the public comments on non-agenda items would follow all new business before board comments.
Is that your motion?
Yes, so, subject, rendition is by motion. All again.
I'll second that. Elegant addition.
Is there any more discussion on that?
One additional question on that.
Sure.
Can that be done immediately, or do we still have to follow these rules because of the Zoom?
Now, the Zoom...
It's a recommendation, sir. I didn't mean to interrupt. It's a recommendation, so it's fine.
Okay, so we can do it, I hope.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I will say that the reason this form was adopted is actually because this new format, the MTA has suggested it's been working so well. It worked pretty well once the old board adopted it, and it's been working very well for us. It was not ever in our intention to have any less comment. We've had, actually, attempting to keep virtual as a component of our meetings. And we'll see how that goes in the future, but it will actually be more accessible than we ever were before with this format, as long as we continue this hybrid version, if it's, the meeting's functional for us.
Okay.
Just like to add also that we had this split public comment on the Board of Commissioners, but it was hard to compare it because nobody ever came to our meetings. Should have been more attentive.
Okay, do we have a motion from trustee Cusmano, supported by treasurer Gillette, to amend the meeting format as presented to include both a public comment on agenda items at the beginning of the meeting and a public comment for any other business after new business is completed? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So we still have a motion on the floor from trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido, to adopt the board of trustees' meeting policy now as amended by the last vote. Do we have any further discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Good job. Okay, moving on to board comments. Trustee Cusmano.
Given the fact that I predicted that the meeting would end at 7:30 AM, I want to appreciate the members of the board for the professionalism and their contribution to this meeting. It's a pleasure and an honor to serve with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes, couple of comments. Last week, my business needed the help of the rescue. We had an employee early in the morning, one of his co-employees called me and said that something was wrong with him. And the way he described it, I just immediately got off the phone with him and immediately went to 911. Long was short, short was long, sorry. In four and a half minutes, we had two EMTs from the Compton Township Fire Department on our property giving aid to this employee. And probably another minute and a half later, med service there. So in a matter of five minutes, we, our Compton Township Fire Department... was able to help and give aid. And it was so nice to see the professionalism of our staff that we had and how courteous they were and how respectful they were and how quick they were. And my employee told me tonight that he wanted to express his thank you to the board and to the firefighters that helped him. And he is doing well. And kudos from McComb Township Fire Department. They really did good enough. So I just, even myself, I want to thank the departments. And I'm not done, okay? No, I thought you were. This, this comments to the board. We sit up here, you know, and I've done this few years, a few years ago, too. We started with a very small fire department, and it's grown into what we have today. And I've always trusted all our leaders, our fire department, people in the fire department, and trusted them with their ideas, they come to the board. And we've always bought equipment, we've always bought, hired on additional manpower. And there's times possibly when any of us might look at some machinery, fire apparatus, maybe a new fire station, and think, wow, that's, that's a lot of money. And what are the residents going to think? And so forth and so on. And it makes a hard decision, it really does. But when you're on the other end of that 911 call, that is forgotten instantly. It really is. So as board members, we really got to remember how important fire, police, rescue is in this community. Because we do it for the residents, we do it for ourselves, and we do it for the community. And that's it. So, and also I want to give a shout out to Med Star, they were right there to help them, so.
Thank you, trustee Oliver.
Thank you.
Trustee Lucido, no comments tonight? Trustee Nevers?
I have nothing further to say, thank you.
Trustee Drolet.
I have no comments.
Hey, I didn't take all your time, did I?
It's seven forty-five and seven forty-eight between two people.
See what I can do here. Who are they?
Not going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I failed to even think to have this announcement due to the pandemic that we're all living in and and trying to move forward on, but it was recently brought to my attention by a resident that there are continuing solicitors out and about in the neighborhood soliciting during this time. We just approved one solicitor. And it'll be on our website and it's updated. And they're from a church, and they will have identification on them that indicates that they've gone through the screening process in the clerk's department. And they only have a period of time that they're allowed to utilize that permit, and then they will have to renew it. So if you are experiencing any solicitors during this time or any time at all, and they don't have a permit identifiable on them from the clerk's office, you are more than welcome to contact the sheriff's office. They will, they will remove them from the area and not allow them to solicit. So we have this process in place to ensure the safety of the residents. Anybody, any vendor that applies for a permit to solicit, we screen the employees. We do a background check, and there's a deposit that's left to ensure your safety. So we want to make sure that anyone that's coming to your door in the area isn't of any harm or danger to you and still allow for people to have the right to freedom of their business to advertise. So please contact the sheriff's department if you find a company that is soliciting without the badge of ID and/or you can contact my office, and we will contact the sheriff's department as well and let them know the area that this company is advertising in. That's all I have.
Thank you, Posey. I just have a couple of things. I want to update the board briefly on the marijuana orders that was passed last week. It's already started big dividends. We, our enforcement officer is vet out and following up on complaints like he normally does. And he's informed a number of unpermitted growhouses what our new ordinance is, and that we're going to be enforcing it. And they have voluntarily agreed to cease their operation. And in one case, the person was going to relocate to another community where he could continue his growing. So it is proving to be effective. It's going to be taking effect officially at the end of May, in which, in case, our enforcement efforts will begin in earnest. But I think it's a good thing you did last week or two weeks ago, last meeting. I think it's really going to benefit our community. I wanted to make that note. Trustee Kuzma, I want to make sure that I tell you that we're going to find a place on the website where these meeting procedures are available to the public and easily accessible. If someone wants to know what is expected of them during any given meeting and all the rules that we put forth today, they'll be there for them. I'm going to give you the file. And lastly, there's been some requests to discuss what's going on with their parks. As everyone probably knows, we were the, we were the recipients of a very generous gift. And we received fourteen acres on Romeo Plain. We have engaged the engineering firm, VW, to begin the process of coming up with a concept and doing a feasibility study for what can be done there. Soon as we have a plan, we'll be excited to announce it. We're taking everything into consideration that was proposed during the course of the master plan surveys, things that have been discussed regarding previous park plans, including the Whitney Park on Fosse Twenty-Four and other potential parks. So a lot of ideas have been bounced around, nothing is in stone yet. We have to see what the engineers think we can actually put there. But that part is coming. I have made the decision to make that part the priority. That is the next art property that will come online, that means the Fosse Twenty-Four part is going to be held off until we can get this part done, and then we can assess what we can do at Twenty-Four based on what we do on Romeo Plain. That is the current plant, the current priority of what we're going to do. We are working on improving Waldenberg. Mr. Carl is going to be making sure that not only is this project completed, but we're going to be reviewing all of our fixtures and assets of each of the parks. Making sure everything is safe and in the condition that the residents expect. Given that, that's all I have to say on that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at the time of seven forty-eight, seven forty.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none of the...
Charlie.
Is the county that goes beyond the motion?
It won't matter, Charlie's already nailed it. Sorry, man.
My tribe is a lot supported by trustee Kuzma. During the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.